Let's go ahead and get things kind of kicked off. So we really only had an agenda that we're kind of going forward with future planning. And I think that, um, we, you know, had some ideas popped out last time about what that looks like. Um, and so I guess, um, what I think would be maybe helpful, you know, so there's a lot of moving parts here. You know, there's all the different departments we have, we have the city council does, we have Riverfront Permanent Commission, and we have what our scope of responsibility is. Obviously, we have parks, which some of that is overlapping or complimentary, or might seem to be reprim- permanent mission, but it's not, it's all. So, um, I was wondering, what kind of a, kind of scope of responsibilities or kind of documents before we kind of start to look at? Where, like, we should have an idea of where we are currently. Um, so what kind of, I guess, outlines can we kind of have? I know we had previously kind of met with some council people at this, at this point, five, six years ago.
Sure. I was gonna say, I can share what I'm able, and then perhaps Alderman Grip might have some things to add. Um, as far as the tenant focus group piece, which we're continuing to work on, um, a group of us is gonna be going into the freight house, um, not this Wednesday, but next, uh, to evaluate electrical. Uh, that was something that was brought up by all of the tenants across the board, just saying, like, we just don't have the capacity for what it is that we need. Um, and I, I mean, if you look at the building when it was built, all of that, none of it was meant to be commercial necessarily, uh, when things were installed. Um, even just speaking from the past week, you know, we've had some circuits with some issues, um, having to kind of like, figure out where things need to be plugged in to make, you know, other things functional. Um, and so we're gonna be going through with ASTIS to just kind of determine, um, electrically kind of where things stand. And then I believe Dee, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're going to, after that, kind of put together, like, what they would propose as far as, like, next steps with electrical, is that how you're understanding it?
I think it's like what, what the building still needs.
Yeah.
From a landlord perspective, but that's just what we're kind of doing now.
Right.
Are you trying to go back, kind of like, what in orientation did everyone get? So are we all in the same sync, given that some of us have been here longer than we would like to care to admit? And others maybe not, like, going through the first original strategic plan right after the commission was reformed, right?
Right.
To be Alderman representatives versus a mayor's committee. And so maybe what is orientation, what have we got, what should we know that we have? If what we're really wanting to do is looking forward to what a strategic plan would look like, and what those work components would look like, and how we would engage in those, right?
Right.
So I guess that's, that's kind of where are we?
And, and I think, like, the stuff with the freight house and then those, working with the tenants is really, really helpful. Because we're like, oh, well, we know that, like, this is part of our responsibility, so like, let's work on that. But we're talking maybe like a little bit of like a higher level view, and then also, you know, for the new commissioners and everything. So I think that's been part of it, is that a lot of the work that we've been doing is like, oh, yes, this is our, this is within our scope. Let's, let's work on that. This is within our scope. Let's advocate for that. But it, it doesn't necessarily give a holistic view. And, and so I think that's maybe what we're looking for, so then we can kind of do better to future plan, you know, to say, okay, like, these are in and out of our purview.
Right. Um, well, as far as the Main Street landing piece, which I know is kind of like the next big piece, I haven't really been privy to much with that. Um, I don't know if you're able to speak to that much?
Well, yeah.
I'll just kind of explain.
And I kind of go, but there's a document, there actually is a document that I don't know, did you guys get this in orientation?
It doesn't look familiar to me.
I don't think I have seen that one before.
So, hey, I'm older than dirt, but still, I'll be with this one. Um, what we did right in, what we did right after we formed was, we need to figure out what's in our bailiwick.
Sure.
Who our relationships are with, um, and what those relationships are. And we actually, you know, we actually did a flow chart on the things that council and the commission have to jointly approve of. And one can, one can say no to the other, which you don't ever want to get to that place, right? Accidentally, you only want to get there after, you know, you know those are the steps. And so there was a, a group of Aldermen and Alder, yeah, Aldermen and a group of, um, uh, commissioners. And we put together kind of a chart of governance, which was what are our areas and, and the whole kind of bubble. So what's our scope of work, areas of responsibility? What is the public dialogue? Like, what do we do, and what is our role in that? And then, you know, daily operations, which we hear a lot about, that's the leases and, you know, the events and the programming and all those things. So I think this is a good document, um, because that, from our original strategic plan, it was sort of like, we gotta get what we want to do in order in a way that the council, because they don't touch us, but once or twice a year, even though they should, four times a year, but that seems an overstatement, um, uh, they know that that, they don't, if they hear something or see something on the website, or they hear something in the paper, they're not surprised by what we're doing, right? And so that kind of was what this document was. And then again, I, I even, yes, well, you should see, these are all, it should be in, it should be in the files of the commission from this. And then, you know, we even went this far, it's like, how do, what's the process to approve a lease? You know, without the city council, what happens with new inquiries? When somebody says, hey, I like that building, where does that inquiry go? You know, like, staff knows, like, what staff person, does it go to that one, or that one, or that one? Who gets it, like, department-wise, other, because that's kind of an interesting thing that's, I think, has been pretty much straightened out. And then, you know, if we want to go out for a request for, uh, proposals, or where do we fit? How do we do this, you know, on our own without council? And when, when do you, when, when is it that there's, it's joined in council having approval? So we did these three processes, sort, sort of to get us there. And we, you know, I looked at our last strategic plan, frankly, um, there's nothing on it that, like, I would say we still want to do, like, that we did. So I think this commission was in a position to decide our future that is within our scope of work. You know, decide kind of what are those pieces.
I, you know.
I just.
I think we certainly have the, we have the capacity to bring stuff up of what I, what ideas we may have for the riverfront. And we don't have the final say, obviously, the council does, but we certainly have the, the opportunity to present whatever ideas we think is our good, wherever we want to put it on the riverfront. We certainly have the capacity to bring those up and say, hey, here's what we think.
Absolutely.
And we did, you know, the vision, core values, and I think you guys got those right. So, I mean, that was part of the, kind of, the strategic plan. And then again, we, we wrote an eighteen-month plan, and obviously, this is eighteen and we're in twenty-four. So, uh, probably way outdated, uh, and.
It was pandemic in there.
It was pandemic in there.
Yeah, I really didn't, I did not.
Put it in its positive.
Very far, very fast, so.
So there has been some work done, in other words, is what Dee is summarizing to say. And we, we, we went down this road to a pretty extensive, uh, amount of effort, don't you think?
Yeah, but I think this is a good process. I mean, those are processes are good. I mean, council sits down every couple of years and, like, revises it, right? Some are, some are total overhauls and some are tweaks. I mean, it's just.
Um, so I, I think what might be helpful, if we could get, when we have that meeting with Clay, did we have a, a look at the future CIP, or did we get copies of that?
We do have a list of our, like, what's kind of coming down the pipeline for CIP. I can absolutely send that out again.
Yeah, I'd be curious, because as we're kind of like talking about what are these kind of new initiatives or next steps, or what's gonna be prioritized, you know, to see kind of what's in the hopper? And then kind of, because that is, you know, the six-year plan, it's, you know, a lot of time and money's not infinite. So, you know, we have to be mindful of, you know, changing priorities. And some things at the freight house, you know, ended up bumping other items from CIP, because, you know, life safety issues or for maintenance or whatever that looked like. You know, there will inevitably be those types of items, but we want to make sure we kind of have our, you know, smaller projects or things that are kind of ready to kind of insert should money become available? Or, you know, there, there seems to be a sweet spot there with, um, I think, a more expensive project gets sub, or a less expensive spot, so we can kind of pile in. So I'd be curious to see what are, because we have that kind of, um, matrix, you know? Um, so what's current and hopper, or what do we need to add as well?
And, and I think the other thing that really never got, um, totally solved or understood is how our relationship with parks is in terms of what's, who's on first and what's on second. So we never dealt with, well, what if this entrepreneur wanted to put, uh, something in in Credit Island at the boat ground?
Okay.
Does the commission really, we don't have unilateral control there. And so how, how does that actually work in relationship with, um, the Parks Department? And while, um, there's this advisory person that comes from parks, I think we're supposed to go to parks too as an advisory, that really is kind of a different role than what we're talking when we actually have action. And we have a, I mean, we have a great impact on them with our ideas, and they have a great impact on us with their ideas, right? And that, we, was gonna be our next steps, kind of, with the, with the council, and then the pandemic came. But I, I think as we, I think one of the things, as we look and, and talk about where we want to go, we gotta, as a plan, as a, looking at the plan and at a vision, how do we, what model do we want to do to develop that relationship that's the most productive? For both of us, right? And that's a big thing. I mean, after, um, Main Street Landing is done, there is a lot of maintenance to be had. There is gonna be a lot of loosens. After the, um, Quinlan Court was done, it was sort of turned to the commission and going. And we stepped up and all of a sudden became the programmer. But programming wasn't in our, in our bailiwick till, you know, kind of exactly. We were doing stuff with the farmer's market, it made some sense. But, um, those are the kinds of things that I think an understanding ahead of time is always really good, kind of. And I don't know from a council perspective, is there's a lot of thought, what is the next three years after the ribbon is cut? And how does that work out with everyone in terms of maintenance and care? And I think some, some thought between all of us, um, if there's any, you know, revenue generating way of getting that something happening or other ways, those are the things I think we can, we as a body should explore.
We, there is recommendation on how to fund maintenance and upkeep on it.
Traditional ideas, probably?
Yeah, yeah. It's local options, it's tax, right?
A government way?
Yeah, a government way to, to, to fund it. Who, who will do the work? Could be, uh, could be parks folks, could be DDP folks.
Yeah.
We could put that into their agreement. There could be another component that's not been, that's not been decided on, so.
And, and it's kind of interesting, and I'm gonna come from, maybe this is the whole advocating, this is kind of an area that it would be having the council step back from that and let, like a commission like us and the, and the Parks and Advisor Commission work on that and propose ones in a kind of, that kind of format with, we have some money, we have some interests around it in the deep. It would, um, I think, be a healthier, we could get a healthier model that we might be able to replicate. I don't know.
I mean, the staff's gonna be, bring a recommendation, it's not like the council is seriously having this discussion and telling the staff, this is what we think it should look like.
Oh, yeah, I, I totally get where you're going.
Yeah, but everybody else might not. I mean, really, the council has told the staff, go solve the problem, bring us a recommendation. They're gonna want to know what options were on the table.
Which is usually what happens with most everything, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're a council, we're not, we're not the staff, so typically, that's how things work.
I'm being selfish or saying that that kind of, I, that kind of idea needs to extend a little bit further, and how do we work with the staff at parks?
I don't disagree with you. The actual implementation of that, right, how, how do you actually do that is a lot more difficult. So how, how does one body who wants complete control of everything, the city council, tell their professional staff, who this is what they do for a living, to go ask the unelected body of commissioners how they would execute this? And I'm not being facetious here, I'm saying, how do you execute that, that, right there? Typically, the staff's gonna go solve the problem, they're gonna bring courses of action back to the council, and the council's gonna vote on it. But I agree with you, how do you engage the commission better?
And, and, you know, I'm trying to feel from, and Dan, you haven't talked yet, but it's sort of like, a lot of us want to take part in terms of being able to maybe generate good ideas or a broader scope, or we have another base of constituency that can make that implementation actually speed, you know, make it easier or embellish it, or... And that, that's one of our roles, was one, like, one of our roles.
Well, I mean, and, and that maybe is the bigger question of, a little bit more of what our role is going forward, if that has changed, or is some elements that it was before maybe should be introduced back in. But I think about your example, I look at it as, well, what's the decision framework, right? I mean, if I look back as an employee and had a boss that said, okay, bring me some ideas, and all I did was, based on the time and resources I had, went to the default solutions, right? Okay, well, it's gonna be the, these lists of usual suspects. And part of that is because you have a ton of things on your plate, you're doing a lot of things, you have a time constraint. And if there is criteria around the decision, let's say, okay, it has to, you know, it has to be a creative solution that maybe does not increase, uh, tax burden. So it's like, okay, well, what would that look like? Is that, I don't know, the living lands and water is coming and doing some park cleanup, or, I don't know. But my point is, is that you're, you're forced to make a creative solution because you're putting some criteria around how to make that decision. But if you take that out and you look at it in a broader sense, my biggest question, and maybe it's because I'm kind of new to this team, is, I look at the riverfront, I look at all the empty properties and plots of land and things that we, we say we want to do, right? We want, we want them to be activated in some way. And it seems like we have opportunities to potentially activate those, whether it's freight house and people interested in leasing space, or Union Station, or wherever. But I don't know, and maybe it's part of my nerves, of the existence of a bigger vision of how, what audiences we're trying to engage, what experience we're trying to create in the continuity across the riverfront. If you're just looking at, let's say, the freight house, and I think I used this example before, was, okay, if you, if you just could have anything you wanted, I'm not suggesting kicking anyone out, I'm not suggesting any changes right now, but I'm saying if you had a blank sheet of paper, is that retail shops? Is that nightlife scene? Is that some type of hybrid, okay, we're gonna leverage the, the farmer's market, and then now we're gonna invest and have some semi-year-round structure? And that's gonna be the biggest one in the, in the state, you know? And we're gonna leverage this vision as a differentiator. It's not just one of the things that you can get in a thirty-mile, sixty-mile radius from here, and it's the same as everybody else's. Because that's not gonna generate people coming down here. And what we want to do is attract private investors to say, I like your vision, I have something I want to bring to the table, I want to spend some money here and get revenue that way. Because it has to fund itself, uh, you know, and it has to be something that we, it helps us make a decision long-term, right? If we said, the freight house is gonna be nightlife party place, not that I'm suggesting that, that then as people come to the table, you can say, this fits the vision, or it doesn't fit the vision. There is a decision component, there's a decision mechanism. And so that's, in the few meetings I've been here, outside of just renewing leases and things, it's like, I don't understand the decision criteria collectively we're using to say, yes, this person gets this space, and no, this person doesn't. There's other people that are out there that if we had a vision, we could go solicit and say, we would love to have you come in here and invest in here. And that maybe go through negotiations, that could become an anchor for something, or a catalyst for something else, or complement what we're already doing. So I look at it as like, we have a melody going with all the parks work and the riverfront work, and we need a harmony that works along with that, right, to make music. And that's maybe what I personally just don't see and would like to see.
Yeah, we, we, for the, for the, we don't have that. And we, you know, energy-wise, like, we, River West is sort of, is that basic, because it's so empty? There are these, these are what we would like to build on.
Yeah.
Um, but that's all that plan is. Um, if you move up to the boat area or Heritage Park, what leverage is, other than the boat? We have not thought about that. If you move down to the East Village, we, again, we have not, we, you know, other than the current uses, is there another leverage there?
Right, right.
And what, what, even the other part of, well, let's just take Leclerc Park. What, what is Leclerc Park? It's not been in anybody's planning area, other than let's keep it as it is until we get to it. What, 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 what makes this all go?
Right.
Union Station, I mean, what we've been is kind of a little bit better than a caretaker, well, caretaker, but a little, kind of trying to move a little bit better than that.
For sure.
Um, and a little bit of a planning. But I, I understand, I mean, I, I really hear and would love to be engaged in something a little bit more, because as we get this plan from ASTIS, it's gonna just basically say, this is a building ready, but it's not gonna say to us, should the farmer's market have that space or not?
See, and that's the question.
And that, and that's what we, as a commission, are going to have to answer.
If that's all going to be, let's say, restaurants, that is a whole different electrical structure and infrastructure and demand than dress shops. And yes, there's some things in there, we wouldn't win all that. But if it's going to be then a massive mega uber farmer's market, and we're, we're gonna connect Union Station and the freight house, and that's like a whole farmer's market system in some way, or some industry, whatever, right, whatever. But we, we need to have that vision before we spend money, and then we have this piecemeal stuff, and there, there's the things we have to do for health and safety, and of course.
We're still there, yeah.
And that's fine, but, and it's gonna take a while to turn that shit, but you have to have a direction. And I don't know, is, is that our bailiwick? Is that our purview?
Certainly, but then, I mean, on the back end of that, it's always, well, your plan is nice, how do you fund it?
Right, oh, of course.
So we have a ton of, we have a ton of comprehensive riverfront plans from the nineteen seventies on, you know? And, and usually typically one little piece of them gets done.
Right.
And then before the next one can get done, you have to do another comprehensive plan, because the other one is so outdated. I think the theme of the riverfront has been, for quite some time now, that it is a passive recreational place. And that, and I disagree with this next part I'm about to say.
Okay.
And private development is not welcome, okay? That has generally been how the, the Levy Improvement Commission and Riverfront Improvement Commission have moved over the decades. Most of the commercial property that's been on the riverfront has been bought by the city and converted into passive recreational space. Now, the one place that that is not true would be from the Government Bridge to, um, the ballpark, okay? And so there is potential there for commercial development. Please remember that is all in the floodway, and so anything that you develop there, that has to be taken into account. And so there, there's also the pressure that anytime you try to develop something on the riverfront, there is a huge discussion, public discussion about, should you be developing anything?
Oh, yes.
Including a park. So this Main Street Landing that we're getting ready to see and vote on here this summer, right, is kind of this more active space on the riverfront, because we've kind of, we've kind of agreed that between the ballpark and, and the Government Bridge, um, you can do things there. Everything else has really been very passive.
And I, I mean, outside of the detail of what that could be long-term, and what people in the community want to see, to benefit the community, it has to have some mechanism to fund itself in some way. There's a point where, if you have so many things, when you're not putting in outside dollars into it, it's all in the backs of taxpayers, I mean, at the end of the day. And then that becomes a cycle that it's its own problem. And an average person is going to be very emotional about, oh, well, I like this. They're, they're not thinking about all the details, and it's almost impossible to have a discussion with everyone on all the details. But if you have a vision with a story, not a master plan, not something that's outlining all the details of, of like a park, but functional things that you can walk through as a narrative of a specific audience. Like, I'm a family of four, I'm a young couple, I'm a this and that, and this is how I could experience all along the way on the riverfront, spend a day or two here, right? Which then, you could say, would generate X dollars in, you know, sales tax revenue, or whatever it may be. Um, and that could be funded by these three things, you know? And yes, I know we're talking about private dollars, but there's some great ways to frame that story. If you take, oh, was Nate Kating's business, he's the kicker, Iowa kicker, he has a development company and has done some amazing things that in other cities, people are like, this is great, Nate's here! And then, you know, they like that component. And so you can tie it with not just somebody who looks like Daddy Warbucks and is like, okay, somebody's here to money grow the riverfront. You can say, we're strategically trying to select people that we know care about this community and have the same vision we do. So I know that's a huge mountain of things, but I really want to believe that that can happen, and it will really help us get ahead of the curve, rather than be stuck in the reactionary mode.
I would like to believe that, too. That has not been my experience for nine years as somebody who is, who has tried to sing that song of what the river, what the riverfront can be and can do.
Oh, I'm from preaching to the choir.
So, and it becomes even more arduous when you face a top-ten flood, right? So, it becomes very difficult.
But I also think if we can get this through, that Main Street Landing, when I say this, and prove that it is, it can be functional in spite of flooding, and it, it is resilient, and it's useful ninety percent of the time, I think that will really set an example that further development can and will happen. I think this is a really critical piece to get through and to get passed, and get it built, and get it used. And then I think that, and I agree a hundred percent on what you're saying, you know, we, it's nice to have a plan. We have nine miles of riverfront, we have a park here and a park. And, and you can ride your bike or walk along our riverfront, and you just go from one place to another to another, and it, it's very cool. And it is pretty much passive right now, but it doesn't have to be all passive. I mean, how much passive can you have, you know? You need something to do down there.
Right.
So, that's what I think is, we have tremendous potential. I think we do need a vision, we do need a kind of an idea where we want to go. But I think this Main Street Landing, I've been a big proponent for it, for, just like Kyle has, for a long, long time. And I try to shoot down any thought that, hey, it floods, okay, so what? You know, it's not, it's flood, it's not flood resistant, it's flood resilient, that's a key word. And it'll still work, and it'll still be very usable ninety percent of the time, out of the year.
And I think there's, I think the railroad actually changed, so I should play my mind on what the riverfront could be. I mean, the railroad is at twenty-one feet, right? I'm a firm believer, and unfortunately, I came here when they turned the, the week after, or the week before, they turned down the flood wall from the Bima in eighty-two, um, that twenty-one feet isn't that bad to the river. I mean, in places, it's not, you still see the river. And while you still have flooding, um, everything that you really invest in is out of that, right? And we're having more ways of getting downtown through a lot of mitigation behind the, the downtown that I think when a lot of those projects happen, the community will see that there's been a lot of improvement in terms of protecting ourselves from the Mississippi River, and investments can happen. And I believe that river driving is not an impediment, uh, even though, you know, people at the freight house say we're a destination in of themselves, they are, but they're also a catalyst for that end of the town, for the rest of the development. We, we really, to me, one of our goals is that it's all prosperous in the downtown. And the downtown goes much farther than the river-to-river drive, right? And when you come down, you'd like to be able to go to restaurants every night. And when you come down, you'd like to be able to go to restaurants every night. You, you'd like to see something, even though you may not wanna go in it in a, in a store, and you'd like to see, I think, small businesses prosper. And, you know, I've also come to the conclusion, you don't bring a whole big company downtown. We are a, we are now a society of small businesses doing their thing. They may, they may be there for five years, they may be there for three years, but that's really, you gotta expect that movement, because that's how we move now. I mean, that's how you, you send your kids to school, not necessarily any longer to a public school. I mean, you try this, you try that, it means it's, all those traditional systems are changing. And I think what our role is, is that is there anything here we can do under our authority to make everyone have a better life?
Right.
You know, is it fun? Is it recreation? Is it a business? Is it something? So, and, and how do you look at that? And, and you're right, you look at the investments of what is the economic, you know, spinoffs of all that? And it's easy to go to tourism, but it, it's also those spinoffs of somebody who's taking home a larger check, or hired two more employees, or how many more pizzas have that sold? I mean, all of that is really good stuff.
Right.
All right, something real simple. Can we, as a riverfront improvement commission, can we make a public statement, make it, get behind? You say you're gonna be voting on this as a council for the Main Street Landing here soon to move forward.
To move forward, or to?
Construction documents.
Okay.
So, we, can we, as a commission even, can we get behind that and say, yeah, we are fully supportive of the, of Main Street Landing? We wanna see this happen. I think it would be a nice little feather in the cap for us as a riverfront improvement commission to say, yep, this is something, this is within our jurisdiction, or even though we don't directly have any control over this because it's pretty far down the road right now. But I think it wouldn't hurt for us as a commission to somehow make a public statement that we are supportive of this.
Is it needed?
Is what?
Is that needed?
Well.
I, I, I've become a pessimist, so.
I'm really kind of really serious. I mean, if you're a construction drawings, you've laid down a whole lot of money.
We've, we've laid down a lot of money. We are, we are years into this.
You have money that's just gonna walk if you don't spend it.
Understood. So, I'm a pessimist where, I'm to the point in my, my life as an alderman where it's like, until we have voted on it for the last time, it is not a done deal. And so.
Fair enough.
We have not voted on it for the last time, and that is certainly something that the commission can and has done, right?
So, you have a public hearing with plans in these spots, right?
Yeah.
All right. So, maybe we see that we.
I did wanna make sure you, Clay and Zach are going to be here at your next meeting, right?
Right.
I have not gotten official confirmation of that.
You should confirm that.
We, we need to see.
Yes, absolutely. Well, they're not ready. You guys need to see the conceptual stuff. You need, in June, is that next week?
Uh, twenty-fifth.
So, that would close.
Yeah, I'm out of town. You, you need to see the conceptual stuff that Parks saw, okay? And then prior to it coming to the council, you should also be able to see the, the technical stuff that we're, that we're going to see. And, and you really need to coordinate that rollout. The, the staff needs to coordinate that rollout between this, this body, the council, and Parks. Figure out how to do that. But you, you, you should all see those prior to them coming to the council agenda.
Will those be made public before you vote?
They have to be.
So, it all, it all gets made public the, the Friday before it goes on the cycle. And then, and then the council has debate and discussion for either two weeks or six weeks, depending on what we're doing, so.
Well, I mean, really, the plans and specs should be on the street because the public hearing is really for a contractor to come in and say, they suck. That's what it's for. So, I don't know how that started off, but it, it would be good if we saw it. And, you know, my thought is, if the public hearing is the, that, that time of resolution is really the time to come in at that council meeting and say, we're happy. We're, we're, we're happy that we're at this point, and this, this is a big point. But, you know, advocacy, I think, is one of our roles, but I didn't expect us to like need it, but it's, I mean, it's, it's all applicable.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been at it for three years. We're to the point where literally construction should start.
Yes.
They could start moving earth by the end of the year, and then actually start putting this in next, next year, next spring, so.
Yeah. We need to make this happen. I don't know if that helped us, in that trend, or picture where we wanna be, then in terms of what we wanna do, but it, it, you know, the idea of us being an advocate, and that was, that's one of the major things. We have to be informed to be an advocate.
Yeah. I've checked in with Clay twice, but I will check in again tomorrow to confirm.
I'm, I'm relatively new to this commission too, so this is a dumb question, but what is Main Street Landing in the construction part? I mean, I don't understand the scope of it.
Here's a guy to tell you.
It's a, I mean, it's a pretty big scope, so there, you'll, you'll get the presentation, but it's essentially the land from the Sky Bridge to the Government Bridge. It will include a pedestrian bridge with emergency access over, over the bridge, so that you could drive an emergency vehicle.
Over the train.
Over the train.
Yeah.
Okay. That's why people are going to ask, why are you putting that bridge in there? That's part of that CP settlement we came to. We will be able to get an emergency visitor onto the south side, or emergency vehicle onto the south side of the tracks. If there's a lot of people over there, and there's a long, a seven-minute train.
Right.
They'll be able to access that. There, there is this prominent park feature or playground feature, like you would see at Maggie Daley Park in Chicago. It will be probably the nicest between here in Chicago and here to Omaha. Omaha just put one in. There will be some passive space, and then there will be some active winter space. And there's trails and swings like at Schmal Park in Cincinnati where, you know, people are lining up to be on there, so it, you know, some critics will say, you're spending a lot of money for a playground. The playground is one section of it, and this is a multi-generational park for, for everyone, and so hopefully you'll be impressed when you, you see the, the pictures of it. But that's the site, from the Sky Bridge to the Government Bridge.
Thank you.
Is there any public access or courtesy docks as part of the project?
Well, we can't on this section because of, you have to be on the other side of Main.
This is a, I.
Right?
This dates back to Mayor Gluba. Mayor Gluba wanted Viking to dock there.
At Main Street? But you're, you're just actually east of Main Street, right?
Yeah, yeah, but even, even to, yeah.
Yeah.
But at Main Street Landing is where Mayor Gluba wanted. There's some.
We vote that.
There's some logistical issues that aren't impossible, but you would spend as much money to get boats to dock there as you would for the entire project on land, were the estimates that we got, and this is nine years ago.
And Kyle, you, you spent another decade getting through the core.
Initially, they were talking about the Viking boats.
No, I'm just talking about the courtesy docks, so people could pull their yacht up, and they'd come in to downtown Davenport and.
Yeah, there was, and certainly we could do some more studying, but I think based on the use of what they have in Rock Island, and the number of drowning deaths that they have had there, there was not a lot of interest in putting like a recreational dock at Main Street Landing that close to.
The dam.
The dam.
And actually, I think the plans show that that area to be filled in, that it be flat. I mean, even a kind of less conceptual, though it isn't in this plan.
Which, which area?
The Main Street Landing where you go down.
The rain access room.
Which gives you a lot more surface to be able there to have maybe private development. Yeah, it's, it's a long time coming.
And that would be a good, a good something to look into if you wanted to do that. Where would be a, some places you could do it economically and safely?
Right.
Well, there is, I'm not letting the cat out of the bag here, there is private development potential at the end of the Sky Bridge. And as we know, upstream, just a little ways, and what's that place called? The restaurant and the bar.
Catfish Row.
Yeah. What's it called?
Catfish Row, which used to be Captain's Steak.
No, not that place.
Oh, Delua? You're talking about Delua?
In Princeton.
Oh, in Princeton.
Go Fish. Go Fish, yeah.
Well, if you, people take their boats up to the very janky courtesy docks at Leclerc, and, you know, park a eighty thousand dollar boat on so they can walk around and shop.
Yeah, that's my point. That's my point. I think eventually, it's not in the plan right now to have docks there, but I'm thinking that down the road there could be.
So, people from Sunset or from Buffalo or Pearfield, where we'll, we'll bring our boats up and park there and come into the area that you're building.
Yeah, I know.
If there's a place to park a boat.
Uh, that would be good.
I do, I do not wanna be a wet blanket and tell you. People look into this and said we couldn't do it. It's like, I, I am not that person. Like, I agree with you. I want people to be able to get there from every way they can and enjoy the riverfront, so please don't let me dissuade you.
Oh, no.
Because that's not an option.
It's not in the plan right now, let's put it that way.
There's, there's a ton of riverfront.
Doesn't mean it couldn't be in the future.
There's a lot of riverfront. There's a lot of spots that may be more applicable or amenable to a dock. Uh, I don't know, as a private investor, that there's a marina, and you could rent a boat.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
You know, and then now you're gonna stay and hang around for a long time downtown, you know, so you're gonna scootle around and then you'll come back. But again, this is kind of that, the pie in the sky thing of like, if we didn't want any of that. You know, if we're saying, we don't want multi-mode, and we only want people on bicycles, okay, what does that vision look like, right? But I think collectively, we would be best suited to think about the different audiences, transportation, ways to get here. We have types of people and families, and what would that continuity look like of experience across the riverfront? That then could, oh, in the, in time and future, extend more west, right? Uh, you know, and that's maybe even past all of our lifetimes, I don't know, but then it's just not something that is sporadic. It's, it's intentional design, because then you'll get the riverfront you want.
And that's, I think that's what the process is, is we don't know what to advocate for, or what to invest in, if we don't know where we're headed. What do we want it to look like in the end?
So, what would be the process in terms of doing that?
Well, I mean, there's a variety of things that can be done.
Or what could you, well, you could put on.
You know, you've mentioned Dan. I don't know, he's somebody that volunteers his time as a facilitator. Both of us are experienced. It can be challenging to participate and facilitate, but maybe, maybe we can split that effort between us and split the difference. I'm happy to volunteer that. I would assume it'd be a few work sessions like this. And then we could even start soliciting folks that we know within our network that would be willing to donate the time to do something that's a little more visual. Can write this all down, but something that could maybe be used as almost a storyboard. Kind of talk through a narrative of what it could be, what it could look like, not details. We're not talking about architectural drawings or anything like that, but more of, this is a restaurant zone, this is a retail zone, this is a whatever, marina, whatever it may be. And start thinking about a plan of, you know, how do we need to go about communicating that? Who else needs to be involved in weighing in on that vision? It's just a vision. And then honestly, the, the, I mean, I'm jumping ahead, but, you know, that becomes something where now you have investors or people that you can start having conversation with. Say, hey, we've got this. It's loose. We have, we're looking for something in this category here. Oh, I'm interested. Okay, yeah. And then that becomes development. I know it's more, more steps in that process than what I'm articulating, but.
Well, some of it is packaging.
Right.
So, you know, I went to, I was in Tucson a couple of years ago, and one of the things that, that they had that I picked up, I couldn't find it or I'd bring it, was this bike path all around the city of Tucson.
Yeah.
And it, I mean, it's like a hundred miles long.
Yeah.
And it goes from the mountains in the north, down to the river, down to the, you know, and all along the way, there's, okay, here's a Mexican restaurant, here's a wildlife area. There's, you know, all this kind of stuff, but it's all on this handy little map you can put your bucket. And, and there's a opportunity here because that bike path goes to East Moline, and all the way down to Credit Island at least. And, and there's maybe even to Buffalo now, I think, and up to Leclerc. I mean, there's a way to, you know, just if we thought about packaging it.
Exactly.
And, and, and then as we're approaching people about helping to invest in the riverfront, you could be included in this. Here's a site to stop and, you know, get whatever. Here's some bike racks that you can, you know, safely put your bikes.
Right.
While you stop and get a margarita at Delua, and, you know, that kind of thing to pump up some excitement.
Right.
And, and start to generate a little bit of, of activity, even while you're planning.
Right. I totally agree. Something visual that has narrative, that, you know, you can kind of tell a story about different types of people that would be engaging with that, all different audiences. And kind of say, yeah, that, that would be interesting.
And then that kind of touches, you can even fold that into the docks. And, you know, that sort of thing, or rent a bike, dock here, rent a bike, do the, you know, whatever.
We need some authoritative, instead of having people's opinion of what, what is and isn't safe. And the Rock Island ones are not only are, you know, up towards the dam, but also right outside the, the sheet from the, from the locks. Maybe not the best place for it, but if we went to the core and said, hey, what's, you know, from, from the dam downstream, what's, what's unsafe, right? What's not very reasonable, and at what distance is it, hey, you're good to go, don't be concerned about X, Y, Z.
Has that been done?
That might already exist with the city.
What's that?
I think that might already exist with the city between the dam and Centennial Bridge. I mean, that conversation and what that is.
I, I don't, I'm not familiar with it, except that I know that we had engineering done specifically for, can you put?
Right.
The Viking cruise boat on Main Street.
That was to put one pier out, so people could.
Yeah, to, yeah, and the, the answer was, yes, you could. Here's how many tons of millions of dollars it would cost to do that.
Why you do anything for not money?
But that's not the same question.
Remember the St. John's Gate that was there?
Having a courtesy dock just parallel to the sea wall that was there on, on rails, that foot up and down on the sea wall, right? So, nothing projecting out into the water, other than the six-foot, right, against the wall.
So, I mean, maybe.
Like a whole of half a dozen boats at a time.
But that, but that's to your point, like at the time, maybe that question framed that way limits the answer.
Different question, right? That was a different goal. That was a different end state.
In that, in that time.
So, what's the end state, right?
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that safety issue with Rock Island really shaped the conversation with the council at, at the time also.
Sure. Oh, of course.
But there, there could be more facts, to your point, that say, well, it's, it's different. I know they're right across from each other, but it's a big river, and there's a lot to take into account, right? Yeah, and downstream from the rollers is no joke. Downstream from like, from the gates is even a different story, so that's where there is, yeah.
I was gonna say.
It's a great discussion.
Yeah, we've got about seven minutes. I know some people need to jet red at five.
So, I would say for next episode, why don't we kind of, like, I think it's all a lot of great food for thought, but maybe look at facilitator, so maybe reaching out to.
Yeah.
Or you guys, I mean, that's just.
It'd be great if someone from the outside, I mean, you do an internal facilitation, should be a class resort.
Wasn't it? But I'm saying.
I understand that.
No, we're just saying we're willing to put that at the table in regards to limitations of resources or monetary or. Or any of those, like if it has to act around it. But if someone outside is willing to step up and help out, that would be.
Well, last time we, we paid the facilitator, you know, that was the amount, and we said like, no, we wanna invest in this and kind of.
Okay.
To make, so, you said Kevin James?
That's, that's one. I don't think he's the only person that's possible.
I think it depends what, what your goals are, whether you choose facilitation.
Yeah, I, that, that's kind of where I am. And we did this whole facilitation with Parks and all the advocacy.
And we did this whole facilitation with Parks and all the advocacy groups and everything. So we had credit, friends of Credit Island, we had all those people, and came up with this kind of overall ideas of each area, just what you're suggesting.
Right.
And so maybe we look at it and say, oh, we, that, that's, that's the basis, that's good. We don't really have to build on that. Where do we have to build? I think we have, have that on, if we need a facilitator for that portion of it, of like, what areas of interest? So we could write kind of a description of what we wanna, what we want to do.
But I think getting ideas though, like somebody else that we haven't even thought of yet, maybe get some ideas of people that, what, what we could do on a riverfront. What, I mean, we can say yea or nay, but I think ideas are important.
Mm-hmm. Totally agree. We kind of did talk about some segments, or segments exist.
Correct.
Okay.
I think one thing you and I had originally talked about as well, um, that we could move forward with, but, um, at some point maybe putting out a community interest survey just to kind of see what it is people are wanting to see. Just speaking from the survey I put out last year that was event-specific. I had a lot of non-event feedback and it was, it was good feedback, it was ver, it was valid. But I mean, my survey was out for like two and a half weeks and I had almost two hundred people fill it out. So that could be an option down the road.
Yeah, it's gotta be down the road. I think it's after council, like, it's their final stamp on Main Street Landing.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's like, would we not like to have that be a forum for people to crank you?
Yeah, you don't want, you don't want like derail.
Yeah, we can't get, yeah, I don't know.
We need to make a push on that though. I think that's really, really important for our riverfront development down there. We need to make that happen.
Do you want me to add that to the council agenda, or not the council agenda, the RAC agenda for next week?
True.
We're gonna have Clay...
It's like only if we see it.
I just, I just send an email.
Oh, it's hard to come to email.
I'd already requested, so this would be the second time I've requested them to be at next week's meeting.
Okay. I think Jim has requested twice as well.
Clay, Chad, and, and Zach, so, um, I'm hoping they will be there for it.
Oh, was the concert last?
Oh, it was really great, thank you for asking.
Yeah, it was really great. There were, uh, this one was probably the one I was most hands-off on because Comic Court has done a very similar, or the Month on the River event before, so there were three different acts, it was six to nine-thirty. We're estimating we probably had a minimum three hundred and fifty people come through.
Oh, wow.
Um, which quite honestly, the three concerts we've had so far, attendance has well exceeded her total from last year.
Oh, wow.
For music on the river.
That's great.
Um, so, yeah, we're really, really happy with it. We had a lot of very positive feedback. We set up the stage in such a way that the river was directly behind them. We used a smaller stage instead of the ban shell.
Oh, yeah.
Really beautiful. This conversation though was so timely because the music started at six and by seven o'clock, people were like, where can I go to eat, what is still open? There, the Juneteenth Festival had a couple food trucks that stuck around, but not for the entire time. And so even, you know, eight o'clock rolled around, my husband was like, okay, I'm hungry now. And like, we had to walk up to the Levonatian because that was the closest thing that was open, so. Um, but overall, it was a really good night, lots of positive feedback. We were really happy with it, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of a dual thing, you know? You gotta have an event, gotta know the events are there.
Yep.
Already told Stephanie, but firmness, I am, Boy Scout troop down in Kentucky next week, so I... If we're, if I'm available, I may call into the meeting, but it's, it's probably likely that I won't be available. And I have no, we have never been to this camp, so I have no idea what that connectivity is like either, so.
I was gonna say, you're, you're...
You might wanna have a...
Wish it.
Camps are usually not...
It depends, but, um, we'll see.
Bog Springs, Sun Springs. All right, everybody, well, thanks so much for the robust discussion. I appreciate it. There's some, some marching orders and, uh, keep things moving forward. Even it, maybe not as quickly as we're sometimes at, but, you know, some progress is good progress, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, once over the time.
Of course.
So, so what's the, are we gonna identify a time, when, uh, these conversations could possibly go?
I think the first step is getting a facilitator.
Absolutely. And we take a look at the, the kind of two or three facilitators and maybe see if they have each have a, to correspond at area of expertise, you know, so we can kind of maybe make a decision on who we want to hire for what we're trying to...
Are we talking like July, are we talking like November?
We need, I think we also need that kind of pre-work that you're gonna need a facilitator to see. So there's some of that work of like, what, what's our, what, what are the kinds of things we want to accomplish, you know, specifically in areas? So they have, they have an idea how they're gonna frame this, how they're gonna work with this.
If they're doing their job right, they're gonna have, give us some money as well.
Right, right.
So...
Like what work we're...
I guess I'm asking how we're gonna make that happen. That's a, I'm, I'm being very...
No, no, you make a good point. I, I would assume it's gonna be depending on the selection and their time and their availability. And then that would get scheduled. They would ideally give us homework in advance of things to look at and, and bringing ideas that they...
Have them help frame what they're...
Right. And then they would say, all right, we're gonna do it three weeks and on Tuesdays and blah, blah, blah. So, uh, Jul, August, July, August, August? I don't know.
August, October.
Um, yeah, I'm kind of nervous.
Yeah, we keep forgetting where to do it right now.
Right.
Well, and that's, and that's part of, I guess, if we're as a commission, we're gonna try and, and, you know, advocate for things, part of it is, you know, we need to have a discussion and then what the next steps are, not just have a discussion and then, you know, what are the, what are the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, those, that, those ideation sessions will then kind of put some meat to this. And then we say, okay, now we need to parse out, I guess, tasks for different people based on what comes out of that, I would think. It's just one of those things, you don't know what it is and so you don't know what we need to do.
Right, or another work session to help, you know...
Right.
Show progress. I might have been a government worker, but I see this somewhere, once in the making. Well, and I think you're right, but, but part of the, is part of...
You can't stop.
Part of having a plan is making a plan.
Right.
So that's a...
Oh, sure. Yeah, it's a slow-moving book, but that's okay, it keeps chugging along, that's fine. No problem at all.
What would you like from feedback for Tuesday?
Before we know it.
On this, I don't know if it can too much.
Yeah.
I think if you can, if we, if you could accomplish the Clay thing...
Yes.
And then, um, I think the other thing would be maybe getting a list of all, if someone has and committed a list of kind of all the...
The CIP pipeline and stuff.
Current, well, that too, but I'm thinking the, the, what people think are current plans for all the areas that we may not even know about, just the list of them. Right? Just to kind of have an idea of all the players that are playing on the riverfront, what are all their ideas already, that are in the paper.
Well, I'll be upfront, I, I don't know, so...
Well, you have no course you...
Yeah.
And I, I, you shouldn't have to be, I mean, I think that's, I don't know who you report to, if it's Jim, but I think it's like sitting down with Bruce Berger and go, okay, this is what the commission is now interested in.
Sure.
And what, what, what do you have in all those files that would be able to help me lay out these, these nine miles? And how they've been approached in the past in terms of overall, not, not a master plan, but any planning document? Because, you know, I also know downtown right there, they did some plan and development stuff where you only can use this kind of brick and you only can do this, do you remember that? With the Main Street Landing, it was, these are the lights and these are these and this is that. I mean, there's one already there that you like.
That's right.
I mean, that should be in our list of things that we know exist as we go forward, otherwise, you know...